Good evening. One second, let me get my notes. Before Chairman Peterson begins the meeting, I just want to first introduce our Spanish interpreter.
Buenas noches, soy Omar Montiel, the interpreter, Spanish, English, and vice versa. Good evening, I'm Omar Montiel, the interpreter, Spanish to English, and vice versa. If anybody needs me, please raise your hand. Si alguien necesita, por favor levante la mano. Gracias.
Thank you. And to my left here is Alex, one of our sign language interpreters. We also have Kristin and Perrine sitting over there, they'll fill in later on if we need them. I know there are some people who need sign language interpreters, anybody else, just come let any of us know, and we will take care of any questions you have, okay? At this point, I'm going to begin the meeting by turning this over to Chairman Terry Peterson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, let me just thank everybody for being here, and we want to get started. I know we're looking forward to comments from the public, so before we get started, let me just introduce the directors to my right. First Director Rosales to my far right, we've got Director Sen, we've got CEO Carter, we've got Director Silva, we've got Director Youngblood, and we've got Director Irvine. Appreciate you being here tonight, looking forward to hearing your comments. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to our budget, to our CFO, Tom, Tom Kroom.
So, thank you Chairman, President Carter, members of the board. So I have the task of translating this 200-page budget document down into a 10-minute overview presentation, so I promise to keep it brief and to the point. Undoubtedly, I'll forget something, but I'm going to begin giving you a high-level overview of both our operating budget and our proposed capital budget for next year. So the highlights, our 2016 proposed budget represents the fifth year in a row of a structurally balanced operating budget with no transfers of capital to the operating budget. It maintains service levels without raising fares. In addition, we continue to accelerate investments in the system with more new vehicles, major infrastructure upgrades, including a reconstruction of our busiest line. We're reducing management overhead to streamline operations and maintain efficiencies. And importantly, we don't depend on any additional public funding. Key highlights from 2015 that play out in 2016 as well, in terms of our focus areas. One is improving the customer experience, and I'm going to highlight two initiatives there. The first is the Ventra app, so on Thursday, all of our customers will be able to download a Ventra app for their smartphones, which will allow them to purchase and display fares for Metra on the Metra system, and also to reload their Ventra accounts and buy CTA fares and fare products as well, integrating the fare systems for CTA, Metra, and PACE. In addition, another initiative I want to highlight is the subway 4G wireless coverage. So by the end of this year, we will have upgraded the coverage for the cellular system in the subway from a system that only had 2G and 3G coverage on the platforms to a system that has entirely 4G coverage throughout the platforms and the tubes of the subway system. It'll be the largest system in the United States that has that level of coverage, and importantly, it's paid for entirely by all of the wireless carriers, so it's at no cost to the CTA customers or to our taxpayers, a $32.5 million investment. In addition, we're continuing to modernize the bus and rail fleet. This year, we completed the delivery of over 700 new rail cars, which was initiated in 2011. We have an almost entirely new bus fleet, or a completely overhauled fleet. This year, we completed the overhaul of 1,000 buses, it was completed mid-year. And both of these things together are improving both the fleet reliability and reducing our ongoing costs. We're investing in critical infrastructure, we have complete station overhauls underway at Wilson and 95th. 95th, I'll highlight, it is the fifth busiest rail station and the busiest bus terminal in our system, so it's well overdue to have a complete overhaul. That work was initiated in 2015 and will continue moving forward. We've seen a 31% reduction in slow zones throughout the rail system this year, representing, again, an efficiency and an improved customer service on the system. And then we have ongoing system New Blue program and investments in stations and track and structure throughout the system. In addition, we focused on improving safety and security. Over 23,000 cameras on the system at our platforms, at our structures, and throughout our vehicles have helped reduce crime by over 25%. Not only does it reduce crime, but it helps make sure that if there is a crime committed, that the perpetrators are caught. We're focused on continued efficiencies at the CTA. Our operating cost per hour is the lowest amongst all of our peer agencies. Using standardized data and reported by both the RTA and the CTA, we have the lowest cost per hour against all of our peer agencies. And what that has done is it's allowed us to keep the base fare stable since 2009. So we continue to invest in efficiencies, deliver those efficiencies to produce an affordable system for our customers. Recent investments, and I'm not going to go through all of these in detail, but I'm going to highlight the fact that our maintenance cost per rail car, highlighting the benefit of the investments that we've made, is at the lowest level in five years. Our fleet age is now 12 years younger than it was in 2011. It's gone from 28 years old down to 16 years old on average. Our advertising revenue continues to increase, our lease revenue increased. We've reduced absenteeism, we continue to do that to deliver savings and continue to create an efficient system, along with our supply chain management system. And this year, we upgraded 4,000 fixtures for energy efficiency, just highlighting all the areas where we continue to look for efficiency to deliver savings to our customers and to our bottom line. And what this results is, in terms of these investments, we've had record-setting rail ridership, it continues on that record-setting ridership, and our bus ridership is stable. Now I'm going to talk for a minute about our operating budget for 2016. So our proposed operating budget is, again, structurally balanced, and it's the fifth consecutive year of an operating budget that does not transfer capital funds to the operating program. At over half a billion rides a year, the CTA is the second largest public transportation system in the country. Our average fare has been increasing in recent years, but remains below the full fare, in part because of the state and federally mandated free and reduced rise programs, which lowers our average fare. And by state law, we're required to recover half of our operating costs through our system-generated revenues, and you can see we're well above that at 55.4%, a healthy recovery rate for the system in 2016. A note about our public funding sources. The RTA, by statute and by law, establishes and releases public funding to the regional service boards, CTA, Metra, and PACE, according to statutory funding formulas. There are three primary sources of our public funding. The first is the regional sales tax, the second is the statutory public transportation funds, and the third is the Chicago real estate transfer tax that flows directly to the CTA. For 2016, we are not anticipating any additional public funding. This allocation was established in 1983 and has been in place ever since. Our budget contains the same historic and statutory levels of public funding as in prior years, no less and no more. On the expense side, our expenses are allocated directly to service. Labor makes up nearly 70% of our total expenses, and that's primarily for people to operate, maintain, and clean our rail and bus fleet and systems. To provide a perspective on the level of service that the CTA provides on these mileage numbers, 73 million miles a year, which is how much our rail cars are going to travel, is enough to go to Mars and back. And taken together, bus and rail car mileage are enough to travel from Earth to the Sun. So a significant investment to provide significant service for the city and for the region. On the capital side, so leave our operating budget and talk about our capital budget. We're proposing a five-year capital funding program. It consists of three primary sources. The first is the Federal Transit Administration, so these are FTA funds. Most of them flow by formula to the CTA, that's our $1.4 billion. In addition, we have $129 million plus $15 million of federal discretionary funds from our congestion mitigation air quality program, and then also from Homeland Security. In addition to these federal sources, we have funds from the Regional Transportation Authority, and then our own local funding program to bring the total up to $2.3 billion that we plan to invest over the next five years. And obviously, as funds become available, and as we seek out and gain funds for the program, we bring these in and we add to that number. Some of the key highlights of where we have been and where we are making investments in our current and future capital program. The first is on the track and structure side. Again, I mentioned the dramatic improvement in the reduction of slow zones that we've had. Key focuses of that work include work on the Ravenswood Connector to remove slow zones between Fullerton and the merchandise mart. We're continuing to plan for the Red Line extension and investing and planning and moving ahead the process for that. We've removed slow zones on the Purple Line Express, and we continue to look at areas where there are significant slow zones and invest in removing those slow zones. We have funds allocated to continue the red-purple modernization Phase 1 to address a bottleneck on our busiest line and free up that line for growth in decades to come. We have to invest in our facilities, so bringing our facilities up to a state of good repair, these are all the investments in the back of the house for things like railcar washers and bus hoists. And then we have our system-wide slow zone removal program, which, again, targets slow zones throughout the system. In 2016, there's going to be additional investments made on the Green Line to help remove slow zones on the Green Line. On the station work, a couple of notable pieces of station work in addition to our ongoing station program to continue to maintain and upgrade all of our stations. Work is continuing on the new Wabash-Washington Station to create, you can see a rendering of it there, a new station at Washington-Wabash, a new modern station. UIC-Hallstead, we have a Peoria entrance there that was added and has significant work. On the Your New Blue project, the next stage of that project is investing in the stations along the O'Hare branch of the Blue Line. Importantly here, we're adding elevators at the Addison Station, which will make that station accessible and fill in a big accessibility gap on the O'Hare branch of the Blue Line. And then the Quincy Station downtown in the Loop, adding elevators to improve the, to make that station accessible. It's a key transfer point between CTA and Metra and Amtrak. Finishing out, rounding out the capital program is our fleet program. Like I said before, we finished the delivery of, almost half of our fleet has been renewed with the 714 new rail cars that are currently on the red, purple, pink, green, and yellow lines. We are well into the delivery of our new buses, and that delivery will continue throughout next year. These are 40-foot buses, our standard buses. We completed the overhaul of over 1,000, so more than half of our fleet of nearly 1,800 buses was completed this year, a complete overhaul of those buses. Again, investments to improve the customer experience and also improve our efficiencies, reduce our ongoing operating costs. Next year, we plan to begin the overhaul of our 60-foot articulated buses that have reached seven years old, so it's time for them to go into overhaul. We're currently overhauling our 3,200 series rail cars, and that work's going to continue over the next two years. And then we're continuing with our purchase, looking ahead long-term, a 400 of our next generation, the base order of 400 of our next-generation rail cars, what's known as the 7,000 series. So in conclusion, we have an operating and a capital budget that's focused on improving the customer experience and delivering efficiencies while maintaining service levels and holding the line on fares. Thank you, and I turn it over to Greg.
Thank you, Tom. We can now begin the public portion of the public hearing. Just to go back over the ground rules, each of you who wishes to speak has signed in downstairs and would have a card with you. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. As you get close to three minutes, if you're still speaking, I will point that out to you and ask you to please stop after three minutes. The front, there are 20 blue cards that have been distributed, which would be the first hour, and that would be in the first two rows up here. A number of people have pre-registered, and I'm going to call on them first. And so with that, Alderman Smith, if you would like to address the board, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Longhi, for accommodating my schedule, that was very gracious. And thank you very much, Chairman Peterson and President Carter, for allowing me to speak again before you. Your new budget looks like you're continuing really a really well-built tradition of excellence that has come over the CTA in the last number of years, and you're really to be applauded for the tremendous work that you have done in listening to your customers. And so there's one more set of customers that we hope that you will continue to listen to, and that is the people who live along the Number 11 bus line. We're here again, along with many of my constituents and many people from many wards, to request respectfully that you find the place in your upcoming budget to restore the Number 11 bus. We think that the experiment to replace that bus with a different strategy with the Brown Line has really not been a success. Many of our local businesses, I've been hearing since that change was made, have really suffered tremendous amounts of loss of business, as well as a really, a truly decreased accessibility to longtime CTA riders. We have representatives here of the 400 senior citizens who live at 2640 and 2720 North Sheffield, who have relied on that bus for a very long time to get both downtown and to uptown. And they'll be speaking to you later in the evening and presenting to you with a petition. In addition, as I mentioned before, the Lincoln Park end of this route is undergoing rapid change. We are going to be bringing online over 1,000 new residential units in the next couple of years, as well as well over 150,000 square foot of retail. We are developing a cultural plan that relies on transportation to be able to get to the 35 live entertainment venues in Lincoln Park alone, much less in the rest of the routes that are served by this bus. A significant number of college students, young urban professionals, and senior citizens living in the 43rd Ward indicate a substantial customer base to provide the necessary revenue to reinstate this bus route. The kind of people I just mentioned are the largest demographic of the most frequent users of public transportation, both locally and nationally. So we think it is time to look again at the budget and bring it back. So I therefore wanted to join my colleagues, Alderman Emea Poirier, who has taken such a great leadership interest here, and Alderman Tom Tunney, as well as State Representatives Anne Williams, Cook County Commissioner John Fritchy, and Alderman Patrick Daly-Thompson, in requesting that you reconsider your position again and reinstate the Number 11 bus. We really thank you for the listening that you've been doing here and really hope that we can work together toward a common end. And I'd like to present my letter to the Assistant Secretary. And thank you very much for the opportunity to address you. Thank you.
President Carter, Chairman Peterson, members of the board, thank you for having me here again, thank you for allowing me and giving me the opportunity to present our case one more time. I wanted to start off by thanking all of you for being so incredibly responsive and engaging with my office, not just over the last few years, but also particularly over the last six months on talking about the Number 11 bus and bus service in general. I also want to make sure that we recognize Jeff Wilson, who takes my calls at all hours and texts at all hours, so thank you, Jeff. And I'll be very quick, I just wanted to close by saying, I've said this many times, you have an incredibly difficult job. You're waiting on money from the state. You are trying to do a lot with very little when it comes to transit funding. And you've done a great job in balancing the budget year after year, especially this year with new investments into capital programs. As you consider doing that and as you take the vote on Wednesday, please do listen to some of the concerns that my constituents, not only from the 47th Ward, from the 32nd Ward, from the 44th Ward, 43rd Ward, will bring forward, and it's primarily, we as a city want to be able to make sure that people can age in place. And as we talk about aging in place and making sure that we can make our neighborhoods a place where people can afford to stay over the long term, that we're also thinking about making sure that they have a way to get around. And I think one thing we know is that, well, we've done a great job in increasing capacity and accessibility to the Brown Line. There are a lot of people who depended on various bus lines to get in and around their neighborhood from point-to-point within a neighborhood, not just from point-to-point from, you know, my ward to downtown. So we have a lot of seniors here, a lot of students who relied on the bus, a lot of families, a lot of people who simply wanted to traverse up and down Lincoln Avenue to conduct their affairs, that are here today, that have been here over the last few years. But I also want to make sure that they understand that you've really been listening and you've been working with us for the last six months, and I truly appreciate the dialogue with all of you. And so with that, I hope you consider reinstating the bus as we move forward, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you Chairman Peterson, President Carter, and members of the Chicago Transit Board. My name is Lawrence Masal, and I'm the president of the Civic Federation, 121-year-old nonpartisan government research organization. Our members come from the major corporations, institutions, and service firms of the Chicago metropolitan region. We appreciate this opportunity to comment on the CTA's proposed fiscal 2016 budget. Full copies of our 52-page analysis has been made available to the board and staff and are available for free on our website at civicfed.org. The Civic Federation supports the proposed $1.4 billion spending plan. We believe the CTA is continuing to build on the reforms that have been made in the last four budget cycles. However, the Federation brings to your attention that you may be overly optimistic in your restoration of state funding for reduced fare subsidies. The Civic Federation is concerned that the CTA needs to develop an alternative budget plan if we are not successful in getting the state, the RTA, and the governor to sign off on the reinstatement of that subsidy. We urge you to work with the aforementioned governor and General Assembly to reevaluate the state-mandated free and reduced fare programs. These actions could help keep the agency on a more fiscally sustainable path, particularly with the significant capital funding challenges and backloaded debt service costs that are projected for future years. Because of the reforms made in recent years and the continued efforts by the CTA administration to manage expenses, you have produced a budget for fiscal year 2016 that does not rely on any one-time revenue sources, nor does it include any significant service cuts. The budget restores some express, actually restores some bus service that was cut in 2010 due to budget constraints and enhances the bus service in the Central Business District. Finally, the 2016 budget continues to invest in technologies that will improve the transit experience. We're very pleased, especially with partnering with the private sector to provide 4G wireless service and especially the expansion of the Ventra Card service to a mobile application that will function across all the regional transit agencies and the expansion of real-time transit tracking amenities. While we acknowledge the progress that the CTA's pension fund has made since it was close to insolvency in 2006, the Civic Federation remains concerned that the overly optimistic investment rate of 8.25% that has been approved by the Pension Fund Board of Trustees remains well above the expected rate of returns for other local funds. In addition, the fund's current 50-year plan to get to 90% funding is less than ideal from an actuarial and from a taxpayer's perspective. The CTA's own pension fund actuary recommends that the fund, Board of Trustees, consider moving to what he calls "actuarial math" over the next several years. This funding schedule would have a funding goal not of the 90% in 50 years, but to get to the more actuarial-based 100% with the unfunded liability erased over 20 years. If the CTA pension fund is to remain stable over the long run and be at an affordable cost and least expense to the taxpayers, these ongoing pension fund assumptions need to be addressed by the CTA in cooperation with the Pension Fund Trustees in the state of Illinois. Thank you for this opportunity, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Alderman Thompson from the 11th Ward.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
To President Carter, to Chairman Peterson, to the board members, and to all the staff of the CTA, I want to thank you for your cooperation, your professionalism during this entire time that we've been talking about the 31st Street Bus, and I know it's the 11 and the 31. Many of my constituents are here, and supporters of the 31st Street Bus are here. I had the opportunity to come last month to address the board, and I'm back here again to ask respectfully that we consider with this budget reinstating the 31st Street Bus. There are many folks that started this process prior to my involvement, which was May 18th, when I took over my new position, but many people, Renee Packlin, Ruby Pinto, Tom Galkey, Debbie Liu, as well as a number of other folks that are here, had taken this lead in my predecessor, Alderman Ballser, to try to reinstate the 31st Street Bus. It's been many years since that bus has run, but a lot of things have changed in our community. I've talked with Alderman Cardenas from the 12th Ward, who's supportive, Alderman Burns from the 4th Ward, Alderman Dowell from the 3rd Ward, are all supportive of a new bus route to run from 31st to Ashland, from the Orange Line down 31st Street, stopping at the Red Line at 35th, and then on out to the lake. The lakefront, the city has invested millions of dollars rebuilding our lakefront with the new beach there, as well as the museum campus where this bus route would potentially run. I think it would be a great attraction for many, and as well as alleviating a lot of the congestion that we see throughout the city if we get more people taking public transportation. I know there is, because I frequent the 31st Street Beach, that there is a parking shortage there, and there's traffic congestion, and I think having public transportation, especially stopping at two bus routes and going out to the lakefront, as well as the seniors that utilize the, or can utilize, the 31st Street Bus. I again want to thank you for your dialogue, for your willingness to continue to hear us, and I would ask again that we respectfully request that we reinstate that with this budget, and I want to congratulate you on a budget. You're doing a lot more with a lot less, and I know the challenging times with government, and I just want to congratulate you on that as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman. Our next speaker, Heather, you contacted me early, so if you'd like to speak, please?
Yes. Hello, my name is Heather Armstrong. I actually do take the Lincoln Bus occasionally. Me and my husband do take the Lincoln Bus. And right now, with the 37, it only ends over there by the Fulton Brown Line, which is a pain in the butt when it does. If you restored the 11 again, then I could at least go like all the way to wherever I want to go in that district without having to transfer to another bus or to the Brown Line, which is way overcrowded. That's the reason why we need to restore the Lincoln Bus, is because the Brown Line is too overcrowded. Oh, yeah, and another thing is about safety on the buses. There's too many baby strollers blocking the aisles, and they're hogging up the disability space. And they're not supposed to, because it says the priority seating is made for people with disabilities and seniors who request it by request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Garland Armstrong. I was a former CTA ADA Advisory Committee member, and I'm here also with some of my good friends and also the seniors who are also disabled, too. And just want to say about the budget, the budget is definitely a good plus for us to make sure that we stay on it, and also to make sure that the ADA will definitely stay on down there when we go down to Springfield, to make sure that the governor does not try to do anything cold and notorious, because all of our ADA friends is making sure about that. And then we want to make sure Chairman Peterson and President Carter, to make sure that we tell the governor, we want to make sure that we want to stable it and keep it going for years and years, because if he tries to change it, that means we will be ready with you on your side to make sure to say to it, how dare what the governor is trying to do behind our backs, and it's really making us feel like a pain in the butt. So just want you to know that you got us, to make us to be well-prepared, so if the governor is thinking of something behind closed doors, we'll be ready for you. And that's why all my ADA friends says, keep the budget and keep it right here. So we want transportation, our lifeline blood, to keep it going for years and ever, so we're with you all the way, and make sure this is a fair one. Thank you very much.
Mary, you're next.
I'm coming.
That's all right, take your time.
Yeah, I got you.
All right, please state your name, Mary.
I've got it. I feel that the fiasco with the yellow line really pioed me, because it took me twice as long to get home when I mall walked from Old Orchard, and like my timing, my timing was a little off, and I mean, it could have been done a little better with the construction filling that little gap there. And other than that, I think your budget's okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Mary, are you? Thank you, Mary. Very much good. Are you? No? Please state your name.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Peterson, nice to meet you again, Terry. President Carter, members of the board. My name is Alan Melas, the Lincoln Park Community Leader for over 40 years, a public transportation advocate, former president of Friends of the Fulton L., and member of the Brown Line Task Force. First, let me congratulate President Carter on your appointment. Everything I've heard about you has been extremely positive. One, thank you. Thank you for implementing many of the wayfinding suggestions I have made over the past 10 years. No service cuts, no fare increases, extensive system modernization, improved customer amenities, and your goal of 100% accessibility. Lincoln Avenue Number 11 Bus Return. Let me give you some very good reasons why this route should be reestablished. According to CTA bus ridership by Route Statistics, the Number 11 bus had 1,563,860 yearly riders in 2010, 1,659,004 yearly riders in 2011, and 1,632,000 in 2012. Mayor Manuel is actively discouraging the use of the automobile, encouraging the use of public transportation. Seniors and disabled living in our CHA buildings on Lincoln Avenue with limited mobility have had trouble seeing their doctors and visiting friends. This is especially true in the winter. As has been stated by the Alderman, the Number 11 Lincoln Avenue Bus is vital to the continued economic revitalization of Lincoln Avenue from Lincoln Square to Lincoln Park. More residents in our community will be able to visit the Chicago History Museum on the weekends, the Solza Regional Public Library, the Old Town School of Folk Music, and the many businesses along the entire stretch of Lincoln Avenue. The redevelopment of the former Jones Memorial Hospital site, with its over 1,000 new residents and 110,000 square feet of retail, will provide more customers and destination shopping. Planning for Transit-Orient Development. The City of Chicago has been encouraging more transit-oriented development. The CTA must plan for the additional ridership that transit-oriented development will bring. Alderman Deb Mel, at the Chicago City Council zoning hearing concerning the TOD ordinance, commented that there's already an overcrowding problem with the Kimball Station in her ward. Improve Public Transportation to the Proposed Lucas Museum of Narrative Arts. The Lakefront Protection Ordinance requires a promotion and improvement, and a repeat improvement of public transportation. The CTA should work with CDOT to make sure this requirement is satisfied. I have proposed to the Chicago Infrastructure Trust a monorail connection from the Roosevelt CTA Superstation, Museum Campus, Solza Field, Northerly Island, and the Lucas Museum. Loop Link Delayed Features. According to newspaper accounts, we are not getting transit signal priority, true level boarding, or enclosed bus stations, and the pilot of prepaid boarding will be delayed until next year. Since each of these features was critical to increasing the speed of buses, it is imperative they be implemented quickly. Wayfinding Suggestions. In addition to all the wayfinding you've implemented, provide more information connecting the CTA to the city grid and attractions and the entire RTA system. As I have testified at these budget hearings in the past, make it easy for a visitor from a foreign country like Schaumburg to use the CTA. In conclusion, I want to thank you for all you're doing to make the CTA the best public transportation system in the country. A first-class public transportation system is key for Chicago to be a world-class city and continue to attract new residents and businesses. Thank you very much.
My next speaker will be Ms. Shaw through our Chris.
Hi, thank you for being here. I'm deaf. My name is Donna K. Shaw. And I wanted to let you know that for deaf and hard-of-hearing people here, I appreciate you providing interpreters to be able to comment on the buses and the trains. I think we need more captions on the trains. For example, if there's a stop, we need to know where to get off, or if it's being, running express, then we don't know it. If there aren't any captions or any words, signage, that says where we're going, then there could be a problem. One experience I had, I got onto a Jeffrey Bus, and I, there were a lot of people, but I didn't know that the bus was stopping early on 67th Street, and I, everybody had to get off, and I had to waste my money because I got onto that bus in the first place and had to wait for another bus to come along to make sure that it was going all the way to 87th Street, which is where I needed to go. And that has happened to me several times, where a big crowd of people get off the bus and I wonder why. Also, what's happened to me on the, maybe the Brown Line, sometimes it'll change to the Green Line, or there's a person standing, I don't know exactly which way it's going, it's just not clear to me, and there's nobody there at the station who can help me to ask, you know, where exactly, which direction I need to be going. And so I have to try and find someone. It's just been very frustrating. And so I wanted, you know, for you guys to have some deaf-and-hard-of-hearing representation here at this meeting. I mean, I know there's been a lot of issues, too, with like their cards, other people's cards not working and stuff like that. So I think you need someone involved in the process of making the budget and planning for the CTA. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Thank you, Kristen. Just please state your name.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Debbie Liu, and I am the Community Development Coordinator for the Coalition for a Better Chinese-American Community, or CBCAC. CBCAC is a coalition of major service organizations collectively advocating for issues and concerns for Chinese-Americans in Chinatown. Over the decades, Chinatown has become more than just a tourist attraction. Chinese families have moved in around the traditional commercial areas of Chinatown, including areas of Armour Square, Bridgeport, McKinley Park, Brighton Park, Douglas, and South Loop, which we now call Greater Chinatown. The sprawl is due in part because of the reliable 62 red line, Archer and the red line. The expansion of Chinatown is also a reflection of new Chinese immigrants opting for affordable housing and low-cost senior housing in their areas. These residents typically do not drive and are in need of various language and culturally relevant services. Many seniors are isolated in the east-west transit desert area and have to rely on their children or their grandchildren to do simple tasks like grocery shopping on the 31st Street. So this bus route gives seniors a chance for independence and quality of living, and it also provides youth and professionals with options to get to school and work within their vicinity. New immigrants, families, and lifelong residents can truly benefit from this proposed bus line. So putting back the Number 31 is truly about transportation equity to the most vulnerable. Reliable transportation to schools, jobs, healthcare services, and recreational activities provide individuals with all, from all ages, races, and ethnicities, an equal opportunity to succeed. Thank you for listening, and I hope we can work together to make our neighborhoods where people want to visit and live.
Thank you, Ms. Liu.
Well, okay. Hi, my name is Avlan. Thank you for giving me this chance to speak. I wanted to ask if they can reinstate the 148, they used to take it to Truman College as an express bus, so especially when the red line over there at Wilson is not accessible. Also, I have a concern where sometimes I'm at a bus stop, and some of the bus drivers, especially if I'm the only one who's waiting there, they seem to be in a wheelchair, they just, and they don't want to bother to put the ramp down, so they just keep going on. Another concern is sometimes if the bus is full, you know, regular people sitting where priority seating is, they'll just say there's no room, and I won't be able to get on. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles, would you address the board?
Okay.
Great. Oh, thank you.
Did you want my card? No. I don't want to break any rules, you know? All right, thank you. My name is Charles Paydock, and I'm co-director of Citizens Taking Action for Transit-Dependent Riders. My remarks will be eclectic, as usual, to try to cover a 208-page budget document. On Thursday, I've asked, reserved an opportunity to speak to the Regional Transportation Authority regarding the inability of the three services to have authentic public hearings. You have to go to page 140 of the budget to discover that there is going to be a public hearing on it. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like you to know that for several years in a row, this budget's going to be voted on the day after tomorrow, and absolutely nothing that you say here tonight will be incorporated into the document. So that's what you regarded. Let's look at a few things here. The capital projects that cover about 100 pages of the document are certainly commendable. 63 of CTA stations have, as you're aware, exceeded their useful life, and 48 stations are not yet accessible to the disabled, and 50% of the elevated structure has exceeded its life guidelines. So fixing up a number of stations is certainly commendable, and keeping the fleet in operation and have to compliment the good employees of the transit service for keeping, CTA's gotten very high regards and assessments from such things as the federal government over the years regarding the quality of the fleet. As a Chicago Green, I applaud the introduction of electric buses. Now, what might serve me about the budget is not, is what it covers, but what it leaves out. There's very, very little information about where services are and when the services are. Now, people are concerned about restoration of bus routes, and most, as you are aware, bus ridership has been on the decline, while rail ridership has gone up a little bit. Most alarming over the past five years is that ridership system-wide has gone down about 25 million passengers, which is significant. The amount of revenue that lost isn't easily recovered. Now, the thing about the disparity between the bus and the train services, there's all sorts of figures here regarding the number of revenue miles or operating hours, depending on what you want to look, between the bus system and the train system. It used to be the system was about 60/40. Right now, the ridership is about even between the two. Right now, the ridership is about even between the two. What's the problem with that? The problem is, is that you need an integrated transit system. You can't, we're becoming more of a rail system, and if you want to make CTA a short-line railroad, that's fine with me, I'm a railroad guy. But you need integrated transit. Now, the decline in bus ridership is no surprise, because what happened a few years ago, 2012, not only did they muck around with routes like 31 and 11, but you got rid of 12 routes and you destroyed 48 others. And if you go, if you monitor the figures, these service adjustments, which are not service adjustments at all, that's what it's called.
Charles, we need to wrap up.
Okay, let's see what else.
Thank you very much.
Oh, wait a minute. Riders are not shifting from bus to train. They're not, no one does that. There's 145 stations. You don't just shift from a bus to a train. All right, thank you very much. We'll see what else.
My name's Dan, South Side Dan. Listen, it's been a well-documented fact that the CTA discriminates against the southwest side of Chicago. Oh, yeah? What happened to the Route 42? What happened to the Route 45? What happened to the Archer Express? What happened to the 61 Express? And who wrongly rerouted the Route 44? I wonder, some people like chopping up, tearing up concrete corners over at Archer and Canal, evidently. I was wondering, who is a Green Bay Pack, a Greenberg Packer fan that ordered the seat, the seedings on these new 5,000-seat buses? Maybe, I thought, Chicago, or was it the New York Transit? Strange, we seem to have that mixed up again. I thought this was Chicago, not Fort Apache. Evidently, the way these 5,000, see, can you call them seats? Or, I don't know. Or can you call this Chirac-Spike Lee-type seat? People who approve them types of seats, they deserve to be deported to Fort Apache along with Spike Lee and his Chirac, evidently. And I don't know how to connect that Route 31, Route 33, will that be going east? Will that be going to Mercy Hospital? Or will that be going to this new beach? And how to reconnect that to the 35 extension? Will it be going through a, through a Sweet Home 26 in Cal? Will that be the connecting route for it? And about the 11, might the 145 be sort of brought back? State Street, Whacker, Michigan, the old route, and then, where did it end? It's, will it end at where the 11 used to start? Was it around DePaul Campus? Evidently, well, I hope, well, whatever. You could find any of these people that approved for, that were against Quinn and at our four for Mayor Rauner, they approved the garbage? Where are his voters and supporters? We know where to dump our garbage off, right on their front steps. Oh, I'm sorry, there was a God in my life. Evidently, I'm wrong again. Thank you much.
My name is George Blake Moore. As a concerned citizen, I'm fascinated by government and the way public policies are being made. I notice how courteous, personal experience, customer service, that you treated the altsmen. You didn't tell one of them to wrap it up. And then, you're going to treat the citizens that perhaps go over a time limit, wrap it Citizens must be treated with dignity and respect. My concern here with the budget, black people, colored people, African-American negroes, whatever name they go by, that they get goods, services, contracts, and jobs. And with this budget, you're hiring contractors. You should show the increase from last year to this year, the improvement that you have made by hiring people of color and receiving these contracts, jobs. The gentleman says something about Chirac. Crime associated with poor public transportation and housing, crime. Connect the dots. So, the money is about the money. I'm wanting to see black people working on these projects and not illegal citizens working on these projects and the vendors do a little shenanigan with who they hire. So, the games that you play here, do not tell a citizen to wrap it up. Those elected officials was elected by these same people, and I watch how courteous you were to them. You've been doing this a long time, and it's time to stop. Our people need jobs here. You, we got black people in high places. Put our people to work on these contracts. They need to work, and perhaps it wouldn't be a Chirac. And the South Side is not getting the same rail and bus service that the North Side is receiving? The games that you play here, who are you trying to hoodwink? What on the back of black poor people when you cut out all these bus routes in 2012? These people have to go to work. So, again, remember the customer experience. When one comes to speak at this mic, you don't tell them to cut it off and wrap it up and rush up to them. You did not treat these altsmen this way, and I don't ever want to come to another public meeting and hear and see such nonsense. Treat everyone here with dignity and respect. You need number 11. Black people need jobs, jobs, contracts, goods, and services. And may God bless each one of you, and in return, may you bless somebody else, and don't tell me to wrap it up.
I've been a customer of CTA since 68. I always liked to say when it was 25 cents. Anyway, I'm riding, I ride the buses all the time. I'm dependent on them. I'm also unemployed, so that is also doubly important for that reason. The Civic Federation Fellow, though, I couldn't help but take note that he emphasized seemingly, it seems it's an overemphasis in a tail wigs the dog type of presentation that people, not only him, but seemed to always mention the students and the employed commuters, but the senior people who have paid their dues in life, in my way, my view, and also good citizenship should be a factor. If you've been a citizen of Chicago and paid your dues and paid your bills and paid your taxes and was a customer of CTA for a long time, I know this sounds sort of subjective here, but I think that should count on those discount fares. Also, that number 11 bus is important. It's a very long stretch where there's the Sulzer Library, the Old Town School of Folk Music, speaking of recreation. A lot of good things that make the city livable and enhance city life, not just the Loop, and, you know, then I have to segue here, Wrigleyville. Cabs blocking the number 22 bus, they can't get through. Cabs should be put over on Racine. All the kids that are drinking and spending money, flagging cabs and Ubers or whatever they're flagging, should not be emphasized, and that's, that goes back to that device thing. When people have smartphones, they, I don't have them. So, if, if I'm at a bus stop and, and somebody says, oh, it's coming in two minutes, and then it doesn't come, that person walks away, and that's not good for anybody. So, some of those devices at the bus stops, you could probably save money by alleviating that thing and make, or making it better. It's good. You can look on it and say when the bus is coming, and it's, it's quite good, 90% of the time, it's good. But those smartphones, a lot of the people that have these devices, I think that encourages the bus driver to be early sometime. I've seen that they come when it says two minutes, instead of do, they come past by at two minutes. So, anyway, I was going to say, going back to the aesthetics and the, and the recreation, you did a very good job on the Division Street bus. Thoroughness and doing things right saves money. When you make a bus, people are practical in Chicago, and if a bus is that old green, how they used to be, the green limousine, it doesn't have to be too many bells and, there doesn't, there don't have to be too many bells and whistles to enhance getting around in Chicago. People like solidity, they like to be able to open a window. You should re, make, one of my pet peeves that I said at the last time was drivers being able to adjust the, you don't need air conditioning and ice-cold buses in the summer. We're not the tropics. We like to open a window. L's years ago used to have windows too. And I will say, your website is responsive. If you have a complaint about a driver, it's very nice. It's a nice, smooth, quick putting down a little complaint, and you get a response back. That's a very nicely-run thing, in my view. And one more thing, badges that they don't wear on the buses. Sometimes they don't wear their badges, so you can see their number. Okay, thank you.
I take the number 11 bus, and I live in North Center. I'm, I would just want to ask if the bus service can be restored between Belmont Avenue and the Brown Line, if nothing else? Because that connects the Jewel Food Store, the Trader Joe's, the Sulzer Library, and the Old Town School of Folk Music, as well as both train stations. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Jacob, would you like to address the board now? That's all right, take your time. Are there any other blue cards out there? Let me get you a second. Jacob, next. Jacob, are you saying you want somebody else to go next?
Take your first.
Okay. Sir, does it step on up there? That's fine, you take your time. We'll get you in a couple of minutes. Sir, just please state your name.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kyle Whitehead with the Active Transportation Alliance. As advocates for transit riders across the region, we applaud the board for proposing a budget that does not include fare increases or service cuts. In a time when more Chicagoans are choosing to ride transit, we can't afford to cut back and fail to meet the rising demand. This is why Governor Rauner's proposed funding cuts are so disappointing. The governor's budget would cut one-third of state funding for transit in the Chicago region, including more, more than $130 million annually from the CTA. If approved, these cuts would damage the regional economy and hurt working-class families who rely on the CTA to get to work, school, and other critical destinations. The CTA board would be forced to revisit its budget for next year, and service cuts and fare hikes could be back on the table. We don't know exactly what this could mean for service locally, but recent history shows the effects could be devastating. Back in 2010, CTA cut bus service by 18% and rail by 9%, and laid off more than 1,000 workers to save nearly $100 million. If the governor's proposed $130 million cut goes through, the agency would need to do more than that. Rather than cutting funding, we should be doing more and making long-term investments to improve and expand our transit system. The diverse coalition of residents and elected officials here tonight to support bringing back the number 11 and 31 buses is proof Chicagoans recognize how critical transit service is to our communities. It's about time our leaders do the same. We shouldn't stop with local bus service. We are excited about the return of express buses and other planned improvements on Ashland and Western, and hopeful these are steps towards building a bus rapid transit corridor on Ashland. In challenging financial times, fast, frequent bus service may be the best way to speed up trips and make transit a better option for more Chicagoans. To get this done, CTA leaders should be doing more to advocate for more transit funding at all levels of government, especially the local and county levels. Cities like Denver and Los Angeles that are improving and expanding their systems today are doing so because they have access to reliable local revenue streams. We can't afford to sit back and wait for the state or federal government to boost funding levels. Regional leaders must step up with proposals now to increase funding locally, or we'll just continue to fall further behind. Thank you.
Former red liner and now a blue liner. I live up in the Jefferson Park area. Thank you for this hearing. A couple of things you, you need to restore, you need to restore some of the service that was cut. I know the cuts were made in the past due to low ridership. My response is that every, every time you cut service because of low ridership, all you do is encourage lower ridership. The only way to increase ridership is to, is to increase service and not to cut it. Number 11 Lincoln Avenue bus, I have a proposal, and I ran this by the PACE board hearing a couple of weeks ago, and I'll run it by you. This is, my proposal would have to be coordinated with PACE. My proposal is the number 210 ends at Lincoln Village, which is at the corner of Lincoln and Yvonne and McCormick. This, this is one of the reasons why the 210 has such low ridership is because it ends in a funny place, it doesn't connect to anything, so my proposal is real simple. Run the 210 down to the Western Stop on the Brown Line, and then take the number 11 and start it at that same point and run it downtown, and then you will cover both ends of Lincoln Avenue. Run that by PACE, see if you can get it by, through them and through the RTA board. Another, I diddle with the number 31 bus, that needs to be restored. I don't live in that area, but I'm sympathetic to the people living in that area. Now, on the budget as a whole, you're depending on money from the governor, which hasn't come yet. I'm not sure what his proposal is for cuts, and I'm not sure how the legislature is going to react to that, but my point is, if you, if you pass a budget on Wednesday, stick to it. Don't wait until the legislature acts. Don't act on imaginary numbers that aren't really there. Pass a budget. The worst, worst-case scenario, we've seen it before, in the middle of the year, you come back and pass what you call euphemistically service adjustments. Those are not service adjustments, they are service cuts because they affect riders. That should not be allowed. Pass a budget, you pass a budget, you hold it for the, for the whole year, because what happens when you pass a service adjustment, you eliminate a route in the middle of the year, or you cut out the ends of the hours so that it doesn't run as late as it used to. People find out by accident that they can't get home at night. Okay. That's one other issue here that I bring up is that's, I know it's not in your budget, but the Belmont flyover, I'm adamantly opposed to it. The people in that community are opposed to it because of the impact it'll have on the community. I know there was an environmental impact statement. That impact statement is flawed because it was commissioned by the CTA itself. There needs to be an independent environmental impact statement. I do not live in that neighborhood, but as a regular user of the red, purple, and brown lines, I say, I'm opposed to it because it's not going to help me any.
Thank you, Jacob.
Okay. I think, just in short, I think there's, the people living in that neighborhood deserve to have a special hearing just on the Belmont flyover before any more work is done on it, because, before any more work is done to implement it. Thank you.
My name is Lindsay Ennett. I'm the executive director of the North Center Chamber of Commerce. You've seen me before at these board meetings, part of the 3111 Bus Coalition. As Alderman Poirier and Alderman Smith and Alderman Thompson said before, we're kind of coming together one more time to advocate for the restoration of the 11 and 31 buses. In addition, you've received letters from the Lincoln Park and Lakeview Chambers, as well as I know the South Loop and Chinatown Chambers have expressed support for the restoration of the 31. As someone who's attuned to the needs of the business community in my neighborhood, you know, Chicago's nothing without thriving business communities and these key services. And in the wake of the elimination of these bus routes, you kind of feel that absence, you feel that negative economic impact. you feel that negative economic impact. And Chicago is a city that prides itself and markets itself to the world. The mayor has done a lot with this on marketing Chicago as a city of neighborhoods. And it only makes sense that the CTA and that the city invest in the economic developments of these neighborhoods by ensuring their accessibility, whether to visitors or to the community via public transit. And one of the ways that we can do that is through these buses. Lincoln Avenue is changing, there's a great interest in it. I know Alderman Smith kind of touched on the influx of new businesses. We're seeing that in our area as well. Concert venues, everything from concert venues to doctor's offices, to craft breweries, to shops, you, you name it. It kind of runs the gamut. And it has the potential to become this really, really vibrant destination area. And I think you're seeing, seeing the same thing along 31st Street, which is changing a lot. It's brimming with, you know, exciting new, new projects, new businesses, and these great city assets, like the beach, which has been mentioned by Alderman Thompson. And in both cases, you have a variety of transit options, will help increase interest, foot traffic, and investment in this area, and its local merchants, which in turn means more income for the city and its transit system, not to mention the added convenience for residents who rely on public transit, particularly senior citizens, school-aged children, and people living with disabilities. And in conclusion, you know, as, as people have stated before, this isn't a north side or a south side issue, but it's about investing and creating thriving communities across the whole city and really living up to Chicago's potential as a city of neighborhoods. And we hope you will make a decision that will ensure that commerce and opportunity are accessible to as many Chicagoans as possible, and that will benefit economic development in Chicago for all people in all our communities. Thank you for your time.
Are there any reasonable to move that out of the trees? Three green card, three steps forward, and fill out these first, these first couple rows. Thank you. Do you want to come up to me? Here'll be the next one soon as I've just moved some of the people out. Just sit right down. There's some seats over here for green card people. Please come right over here. Come right over here. Miss Shaw can stay. Of course she can stay. Fill in these first two rows, please. Thank you. Are you there to start? Just please state your name. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Martin. I'm the Director of a Senior Center on the North Side of Chicago. I'm also a community advocate that have lived in North Center and Lincoln Square for over 35 years. I've been here before, and I thank you for your opportunity for listening to all of us. I have a short comment to make, but before I do, I just wanted to relate this note from someone that heard that we were coming here today, and her name is Reina. Reina is 90 years old, and she called me this afternoon before I left. And she said that she read an article about that we were coming here to try to get our, our bus back. And she, as I said, she lives by Lincoln Avenue in Wrightwood. And she wanted me to tell you that she hasn't been out since 2012. She would always be taking the Lincoln Avenue bus wherever she needed to go. Now she's on Meals on Wheels and just stays in her apartment. So here's for Reina. I want to quote something from Ecclesiastes. "For everything there is a season and a time for every purpose under heaven. Now is the time for the board to please bring back our bus, and we praise the Lord." Thank you for your time.
My name is Winnie T. Vell, and I am here with Lisa Martin and the Number 31 and Number 11 CTA Bus Coalition. We do need the bus. We need the bus to shop, we need to go to the library, and to all of the other entertainments. You can use the Number 11 bus to go downtown with your family and friends to enjoy holiday events. How will the bus help the community? If you want to take one bus downtown, the Number 11 goes directly down Lincoln Avenue. This is so convenient, especially for the aging population. And so I ask, please fund the restoration of both the Number 31 and the Number 11 routes. Thank you.
Please state your name.
Okay. Hello, my name is Samantha Stenzel, and I am also a longtime resident of North Center. Born and bred Chicagoan. I've been going on the CTA as a main form of my transportation since I was a young child. The people who have spoken before me have hit on many major points and very well. I would like to thank Mr. Carter and the board for the hearing and for all of the positive feedback I have heard from people who have dealt with you. And believe me, that means a lot. Because many times, we have felt we came and we just sort of rambled on, and nobody really cared, or it did not have any impact. So all I wanted to say, because people have mentioned so much, is that I have, for the last three years, and recently once again, been talking to residents and business people along the Lincoln Avenue that was eliminated. And many of them could not be here tonight. They have written to the CTA. These are, we're going from nonprofits to small and large businesses, employees of the various organizations, Zulser Library, Old Town School of Folk Music, also the grocery stores from the very small mom-and-pops to Jewel, Trader Joe's, et cetera. Everybody has voiced their support and have, have mentioned how adversely it has impacted them. Nonprofits, including the Director of Goldie's Place, who wrote a letter to the CTA Board. She was unfortunately not able to come. She said her clients are dependent on public transportation. They serve people who are homeless and are setting about to get their life back on track through training programs, job placement, et cetera, dental care. They need the Number 11. They're up farther north, and they need this branch. Also ARP, Representatives of the American Association for Retired People, who are dealing very closely with transportation in the area on a variety of levels. They are also wanting to know that they are in full support of having the service reinstated.
Ms. Stenzel, we're at three minutes.
Okay. That is what I wanted to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leroy Johnson. I, I live in the neighborhood called Park West. We, and I'm on the board of, of the Park West Community Association, which is an association that borders Lincoln Avenue, tries to improve the area for all the residents. Anyway, I'm going to say the same thing I said to Mr. Claypool three years ago. And I stood here, and I said to his, he and his board, that all you hear on TV after the recession that we had a few years back was we've got to increase and help the small businesses, because they're the ones that are going to take us out of this recession. They're going to hire the people, all these people that are out of a job. And so what do we do? We cut off the transportation to the small businesses. Because if you look on Lincoln Avenue and around Lincoln Avenue, it's all small business. And, and those are the kind of places that give people jobs, and they take, they make the neighborhoods grow. And, because I've been on the board of our, our association for, I've, I've lived there 44 years. And so I know what happens when, when things grow in the neighborhood. Things, good things happen. So I just want to support all the people that have said about restoring the bus on Lincoln Avenue. And I just, I just hope that it can happen, because all those small businesses generate jobs and, and help neighborhoods grow. And I want to thank these people that are making these signs, these three people up here, they're, they do a great job. Thank you.
Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Carol Brunkowski, and I live in the South Lakeview neighborhood area. I was previously a southwest sider before I moved, I married a north sider 23 years ago. And that was before the brown, the orange line on the south side. So welcome to the world of mass transit. I was in heaven. As you can tell, I've been here before. I'm a big believer in recycling, so I'm here tonight and trying to be positive. This, I think, is the third hearing I have attended for the Number 11 bus. And at each of the hearings, I think, I can safely say that folks came out in droves to support this bus. In fact, last year around this time, I think, when the board was, the bus was eliminated, there was a sea of yellow in the Sun Times the next day. I think you can all also see that the bus has widespread support from both politicians and the everyday working people like myself in the 43rd, the 32nd, and the 47th wards. My own little anecdotal story is that Lincoln Avenue bus would get me to the Sulzer. I'd pack along my violin and take fiddle lessons at the Old Town School of Music. It got me to Jewel, it got me to Whole Foods. It used to get me to the opera and the symphony. And now that I have to drive and pay 30 bucks, I don't do it anymore. And I am very happy to say that I would save, I would leave less of a carbon imprint, because the Lincoln Avenue bus used to get me to Union Station, where I could hop on the Metro and get to New Buffalo on the weekends. The elimination of this bus has had some negative impacts on businesses. We see a lot of empty storefronts now between Diversey and Belmont along Lincoln. And I want you to just reconsider this fact. At the time of the closing of that bus, or the elimination of the bus, it had the highest ridership increases throughout the entire city. So I'm going to urge you to put the bus back. Give it back to the neighborhoods, because it really does make a difference in our lives. Thank you very much, and I hope you have a good evening.
Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Goble. I'm with the Bridgeport Alliance, and I'm also here to represent the Crosstown Bus Coalition. I work with students in the city, teaching them about social justice issues and engaging them in community service to create not only a better city of Chicago, but a better world. But this can be pretty difficult to do when our worldview is limited by lack of public transportation. It's hard to learn and serve communities surrounding us when we can't get to them. Reinstateing the 31st Street bus would not only broaden the worldview of the students that I work with by connecting them to communities outside of Bridgeport, but it would also greatly improve the health of the whole community. Along the 31st Street bus route are several, several churches, food pantries, schools, Mercy Hospital, local businesses, that are all there meant to benefit those who are living in my community, working families, the elderly, and students. But without a bus, our access to food, healthcare, education is more, and more, is greatly limited. And the growth of my community is stunted. The, the quality of life is decreased. When planning the budget, I urge you not to neglect my communities and those individuals who rely on these services and public transportation to get to them. So please reinstate the 31st Street bus, as well as the Number 11 bus. Thank you.
My name is Quaid Gallagher. Thank you today for taking the time to listen to the public and their comments. But I would also like to thank the public for coming and making these comments. They took time out from their families, from their friends, from their communities to come here and speak to you about these issues and this budget that matters so much to their lives. I'm an alumnus of the Illinois Institute of Technology, one of the great collegiate institutions of our city on the south side. And I can tell you from personal experience and conversations I've had with students there, who I still keep in touch with, that 31st Street bus would be a great help to those students. Currently, most students leave the south side entirely to go elsewhere in order to shop for groceries, get school supplies, and find recreation, and have real City of Chicago experiences. This takes them out of the neighborhoods of Bridgeport and Bronzeville, where they spend money and their time and have these experiences elsewhere. These students could be a huge benefit to their local economies and communities where they study. Instead, everyone is deprived of their potential that they bring as young innovators. And these students are deprived of the benefits of community and neighborhoods which they desperately seek. Bridgeport is the first choice of these students when they decide to move off campus. And it's not only because of the proximity to the school, but because of the local community that is there in this old, historic Chicago neighborhood. Getting around, though, can be a huge obstacle. The absence is especially felt when it comes time to seeking healthcare at Mercy Hospital, recreation at the 31st Street Beach, and simply everyday commutes to their school. The presence of a 31st Street bus can easily provide this transportation and these experiences. It would allow students to stay within their communities, to spend their time and their money, and to form their relationships with their neighbors, strengthening the local economy and the neighborhood fabric by connecting students through adjacent neighborhoods of Bridgeport, Bronzeville, McKinley Park, and others. These students are only one part of a larger story. A story of Chicagoans who have historically relied on public transit in order to commute to their jobs, their homes, their favorite local businesses, their trusted healthcare, healthcare providers, and so much more. I'm here today, along with so many others, to tell the CTA Board that the reinstatement of this bus route is vital to our lives and to our neighborhoods. The CTA plays a huge role in all of our lives because of either its presence or its absence. Let the 31st Street bus and the 11 bus play a role in our lives because it is present and makes it better, rather than its absence. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Laura Meyer. I live in the 43rd Ward. I've been there for about 15 years, and I'm also a member of the Old Town Triangle Association. President Carter and Chairman Peterson, thank you very much for taking the time to listen to us, and also thank you for being here. I recently wrote Mr. Longini this letter. "These are the reasons why the CTA Bus 11 Extended Route should be restored along Lincoln Avenue. Generates more business and tax revenue. Allows greater ease of movement for all ages, especially as the population ages. Strengthens communities along Lincoln Avenue. Encourages cultural and entertainment activity and spending. Promotes walking and provides an alternative to cars. Increases the eyes on the street. Jane Jacobs' prescription for healthy urban neighborhoods. Bus 11 is a lifeline for people and businesses along Lincoln Avenue from the far north to the south of the city. This bus line adds value to property and to people's lives. Bus 11 is a catalyst for growth. To remove a fluid bus line and replace it with a patchwork of two- or three-step transportation substitutes is shortsighted, reducing citizens' independence and mobility and inconveniencing a lot of people. These past three years, particularly during cold winters. Eliminating the bus line in the middle of a financial depression and, as Children's Memorial Hospital closed, defies economic development principles. When construction begins on Lake Shore Drive, the really massive reshaping of Lake Shore When construction begins on Lake Shore Drive, the really massive reshaping of Lake Shore Drive in the next few years, the city will require an alternate north-south bus line to accommodate passengers moving around the city. Restore the Bus Eleven route and Thirty-One in its entirety now and watch the Lincoln Avenue corridor revive and thrive. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Dara Salt. Thanks for being here. We really appreciate all of you listening to us as we please ask for our number eleven back. I work for Alderman Poirier and take hundreds of phone calls all the time. And every one of these people represents another hundred that I've heard from in these past few years about our number eleven bus. But my anecdote is that my husband and I have raised two kids in the city. We've lived up on the north side, although we're originally southsiders, for many, many, many years. And we taught our children how to ride the number eleven bus. And what separates our city kids from, dare I say, Schaumburg and the suburban kids is that they feel comfortable in their world, on their streets, on public transportation. Because unlike so much of the world, they can get around in Chicago. Chicago is at people's fingertips. And taking a bus, looking out that window and seeing people walking and all the people who are going to school and going to the grocery store, going to the bank and the doctor, this is what makes community. And both of my kids now live in Washington DC, in the city. And they both still take public transportation to work because I think that they were always made to feel so comfortable on the streets of Chicago on their public transportation. So, I want to thank you again for listening to us. And I know you've been listening because you've been watching us, and we really appreciate any help you can give us for our buses.
My name is March Long, and I'm here to talk about the number eleven bus. I'm actually here for the people who can't be here. Those are the old people in our neighborhood. They're very dependent on the number eleven bus. And they use it to go to the doctor, to go to the CVS, to fill their prescriptions. They want a grocery shop at the Jewel, and they also probably want to go to the library like me because I'm an avid reader. All of these are located right on Lincoln Avenue. We all get older, and though we hate to admit it, we can't do the things that we used to take for granted. So, I'm asking, please make life easier for these people by funding our bus. And I want to thank you all for your attention.
My name is Denise Humphrey. I'm one of those old folks that she was talking about, the Denise number eleven bus to get me here and there. My daughter lives at LaSalle and Lincoln, and I could take the bus to visit with her. I used to, thirty years ago, where I've been living, on Addison and Lincoln. I could walk there. But now, I have Arthur impeding, arthritis, that is to say, impeding my gait. So, I don't know, I have much more to say how wonderful it is, all the streets and all the theaters and the rest. You've heard that all. I agree with all of that. Please bring back, back the bus for us old duffers that really need it because we're having trouble getting around. And we're trying to age in place. I'm, as I said, Addison and Lincoln. And it's, it's a good place to age in place because I've had the Lincoln bus, I've had the Addison bus, I've had, you know, the Brown Line and all of that. And I, for one, and people that I visit in the old home with me, would really appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is David Crosby. I'm an elected representative at the Edith Spurlock Sampson Apartments, Senior Housing, 2640 North Sheffield. And the Lincoln bus is practically, the stop for the Lincoln bus is practically at our door. And when it was discontinued, we were devastated. We were impacted in the worst way. There's four hundred residents in our complex. We have, in one building alone, twenty-one wheelchairs. We have paraplegic and amputees. This, our community is vulnerable. We're seniors, eighty, ninety, seventy, sixties, low income, fixed income. And so, it doesn't, quality of life to us mean independence. And the number eleven provided that independence. We have seniors without family. And this budget hearing is the first one I've been to, and it's turning into a human suffering hearing because of the number eleven has devastated so many people and impacted so many people's lives. So, I have, in forty-eight hours, we collected a hundred and forty petitions, names on these petitions, trying to express how much the number eleven is a necessity in people's lives when so much is being taken for granted. You know, simple things in life mean a lot to those of us whose mobility is declining. We're on the decline. And the number eleven afforded us some sense of quality to be independent in our life. We have people in our building who've traveled the world, raised family, own businesses and things like that. We have workshops and groups every night, every week. And the most common thing that we have in common is we want our independence. And the number eleven afforded that to us. Maybe I won't take advantage of it yet, but in coming years, number eleven will service me as will others. And we're asking you to go beyond the budget, go beyond the numbers, and connect to the human connection that the number eleven and these bus routes, Thirty-One and others that impact our lives. This is a budget hearing, not so much about physical responsibility and crunching numbers. This is about impacting people's lives, everyday lives. They send the people here that sign these petitions with standing up, and they want some type of relief. And the number eleven, right there at our doorstep, wintertime, we don't have to negotiate short distances by scheduling a pace bus a day ahead to go in the short distance. Number eleven allowed us to, at our own free will, get up and enjoy life. That's the quality that we want. And we appreciate these hearings. We appreciate the tremendous improvements that the CTA is doing citywide. But when it comes down to it, somebody seventy or eighty in their apartment looking for the number one to bring some type of enjoyment and relief in their life is what we want. And so, thank you for hearing us, and we ask you to reach into your hearts and just think about it. Just think about it and make your decision based on the human interests. Thank you.
Hi, I'm new to the, the district. I moved here from Detroit by way of California. Las Vegas is what have you, entertainment field. And now that my legs are failing me at seventy-four, now it's time, because I'm a walker. I walk from Sheffield to Clyburn because I know I can ride back. And I see the kids going there. I have more for them that's in school. They need the help as well as we do because they need to get two and four jobs. They have jobs to go to, they have school to go to, and whatever else they might have. And they need that bus as well as we do. And I know when I first moved into the neighborhood four years ago, numbers weren't being counted because they told us to just show our free card and they didn't, you know, they, we didn't have to swipe it. So, that number wasn't counted. It was like we wasn't riding the bus. I learned how this, this neighborhood worked because I ride the bus to go all the way to McCormick and then all the way back. Now, I know where I am, and then I'll ride this way and this way on the bus. Buses are a very vital part of us getting around. I sold my car because this town is hard to deal with when it comes to driving. You got the signs up on the corner, you got an intersection. I don't know what it's telling me to go right, left, this way or that way. You know what I'm talking about. So, I got tired of getting lost. But when I found the bus stopped, and then I'm in an area, I took a tour so I could find out where I'm going to live. I'm here babysitting my grandbaby. He's five now. But anyway, I was trying to get the tour where I could find out where do I live? And so, I wanted to go on surf, but that was okay. But it didn't dawn, oh, I could move right, right here at Sheffield. And it's exactly where I need to be. You have everything that you need in this area. You don't even have to leave your area, but you have to get to and fro. You got the Diversey, you have the Lincoln, and you got Broadway, you have Halsted. I've walked all these streets. And right now, my walk path is Sheffield all the way to Clyburn. But then I have to catch the bus back. You know what I mean? So, you got your one ninety, one fifty-one and all those, but we need our Lincoln. And the people that ride wheelchairs, it's easier for them to get on the bus than it is to get on that train. The train, they got, the man has to get off, he has to put a board down and all this. And it's very scary. It really is, you know? Because I was walking, riding with one of my girlfriends in the wheelchair. She said, "Girl, I can't take this. This is just too scary." We've had a lady that was trying to get to the bus, to the, I'm not the bus, but the train, the Brown Line. And she stayed in the hospital for six, six months because her wheelchair hit a bump and it knocked her down. And she had, you know, several broken, break in her legs and what have you. But if she could have just caught her Lincoln right up to the currency exchange and where else she was going, she would have been okay. So, I just say this, it ain't about money. It's about convenience. It's about need. Money has nothing to do with it. I've been up to Springfield, I've been doing this for years. In Detroit and everywhere else, I'm always advocating about whatever, you know, lobbying for something. Okay, I know me. You got to stop me.
Hello, my name's Renee Paquin. I'm also with the Thirty-One Eleven Bus Coalition and Bridgeport Alliance. In two thousand eight, there were federal dark funds authorized to cover half of the reinstatement of the Thirty-One bus. And it was intended to provide access to jobs. We all know this. Instead of reinstating that route, the money was set until about two thousand eleven when community members demanded an extension on the grant. In two thousand fourteen, we were thrilled to learn that the Thirty-Fifth Street bus would be extended to cover parts of Little Village. That was really good. It was a partial win for us. After dozens of meetings, hundreds of photo petitions, a few direct actions, more phone calls and emails than I can count, it was nice to have that partial win. Then we learned that the study that led to that decision only surveyed people in English and Spanish, but not Chinese. And if you know our neighborhood, that's about a third of the population. Only people who were already riding on buses were interviewed. So, those who were finding alternative transportation on Thirty-first Street to places like Mercy Hospital were not being interviewed. That, learning about that study didn't sit very well with us. I work at a church on Thirty-first Street. We have a clothing pantry, and twice a week, we provide clothing and meals to people in need. During that time, I hear a lot of the difficult stories that our neighbors have about getting around on public transportation. And here's, here's what I see. Kids in our neighborhoods can't get to the Thirty-first Street Beach. They can't get to the hospital, and they can't get to IIT or my alma mater, Schuymer College. They probably assume that those things are not for them. When job seekers can't get to our clothing pantry for a suit or get to the laundromat to wash the suit or convenient transportation to get to the interview on time, do they really stand a chance of getting that job? Parents who can't get to the grocery store, it's affecting the health of their children. It's affecting their grades, their education, and their mental stability. I ask you to please consider a reinstatement of the Thirty-first Street bus or at least the accurate feasibility study that actually covers all of our population. As we've told you in recent months, the community is growing, it's thriving, and this is a vital tipping point. We need the bus to ensure that that growth will continue and that our residents will thrive. Thank you.
My name's Benjamin Huey. I've been part of the Bridgeport Alliance ever since it's formed. I used to ride the Thirty-first Street bus every day. So, I know the route, how it runs and that. I know what the people need. And I've talked to some of the businesses, and they are asking, try and get this bus reinstated because I know, we know it'll help our businesses. A lot of the businesses are closing up because they haven't got the business coming in. If we have the bus, it will help us. And there are seniors, like my friend said, everybody out there. I'm only a half a block away from the corner to catch the bus where the Thirty-first would be. And it would help me, it would be easier for me to get to Thirty-first, to take it to Ashland, or Thirty-first to Halsted, to get to some of these stores. But boy, now, I got to do a roundabout way, four or five different routes just to get to these stores. And that's not healthy for us. And then we're waiting in line for the bus? What is it? And then half the time, sometimes, some of the buses, they'll see you standing there, they'll fly right past you. What is that? Is that from the drivers or from, they just don't want to stop? Because like, I was up on the north side one day. I got stuck up there for an hour and a half waiting for a bus to come back south. But that was because of the derailment. And we need this Thirty-first Street bus so we can get to where we need to. And like the, the kids from the school and that, they can use it. Going to the hospital, let us go to the beach. It's hard for us to get to the beach right now. And it would, if it's only going to the beach on the weekend during the summer, what good is that to us? We like to go every day, go for a couple hours, sit out there, enjoy ourselves. Now, we're just sitting at home, sitting on the front porch or, and thinking of what, what we could be doing. Or go fishing out there at the lake. But we can't go anywhere because we ain't got a bus. And I know this bus don't have a lot of riders, but I think this, now it will. And I think, no matter how many riders you have on a route, it's still, that route is working. And that's what we need. No matter how many riders we have on a route, we need the route.
Hello, my name is Ruby Pinto. I'm chair of Bridgeport Alliance, and I've been a resident of Bridgeport for four years now. I've worked in both the Eleventh Ward and the Forty-seventh Ward. I worked in the Eleventh Ward for several years, and I saw the business district expanding. Currently, I'm in the Forty-seventh, and I see a very dynamic, growing business district there. Both wards would be greatly served if these buses were reinstated. But I'm more concerned about our seniors and our low-income residents in our neighborhoods. It's getting really cold, and a lot of people are being devastated by the cuts coming from Governor Rana. More and more people are really going to start depending on public services and things like clothing and food pantries. In my neighborhood specifically, we have both a food pantry and a clothing pantry along the Thirty-first Street bus. I've talked to a lot of people who simply cannot make that trek in the cold, whether it's because they are elderly and they can't do it physically, or because they have a lot of children and they can't take their children out on this trip. And so, this is really going to be a lifeline. And so this is really going to be a lifeline for people who are being devastated currently by the cuts that Governor Rana is imposing on our state. I know you understand the desperate situation that we're in is for funding, but I've spoken to so many people who can't make it without these kinds of services, so I hope that you consider them in your budget. And also, if you do decide to do a feasibility study, I urge you to speak to residents within our community. I know in Bridgeport, we have a number of people, including people from Chinatown, who would be more than happy to help you create a feasibility study that will address the needs of people in our community, including those that don't speak English. As Renee stated, we have one-third of our residents who are Chinese speakers, both Cantonese and Mandarin, and so it's really, really important that if you're going to access those seniors typically who are isolated in the corridor between east and west transportation, this feasibility study does need to be translated for them to have access to. So I hope that you reconsider your budget and add in funding for both the Number 11 and the 31st Street bus. Thank you.
If you want to say one thing, Ms. Meyer had pointed out that she had sent me an email, that's what everybody here knows, especially the Number 11 people. Starting a couple weeks ago, I began getting emails, well over 200. Every one of those pieces of communication has been forwarded to all the board members, to President Carter, to management, so everything is important, so I don't want anybody to think it just goes in the Mayan box and gets to the board. I just want everybody to know that. Does anybody else have a green card? Anybody else have a green card to sign in? With that, I want to thank you all for coming tonight and having enjoyed the evening call. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.